I want to welcome our guest tonight, appreciate you being here. And before we get started, I'll say the last great leader of the Center for Police Analysis and Development, I'm going to ask Mr. Shane Harris to come here and give a brief indication.
(Inaudible)
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 Gracious heavenly Father, Lord, as we come before you at this time, Lord, I just pray to start with, Father, just a hedge of protection over our city, over our land. Father, I just pray, Lord, that you would engulf us with your Spirit. Father, that you would just fill this place here with your grace and your mercy. Father, I pray for this council, and I ask, Lord, that you would touch each and every one of them. Lord, that you would bless them, and, Father, the position that they hold. Lord, that you would lead and guide them in every decision that's made. Father, I pray for the people, Lord, of this city. And I just ask, Lord, that you would just pour out your anointing upon this entire place, Lord, not just from city limits to city limits, Lord, not just this county, but, Lord, this entire state and this nation. God, we may serve you. Father, allow us, Lord, to do what's right in your sight. Lord, we have many that seek in this land. And, Father, we lift them up, and we pray for one another. And, God, I just ask, Lord, that you would touch, and that you would heal them. And, Lord, as they come to conduct this meeting tonight, Father, just grant wisdom and grant knowledge. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I appreciate our local pastors coming, and thank you Shane for coming and giving our indication. That means a lot to us, we try to get our local pastors involved, and I appreciate you taking time to come.
Anytime y'all call me, I hate I have to leave, I got some little girl to dance.
That's going for it. Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to have a public hearing regarding two things. Mid-South Petroleum Corporation, which would be Max Mini Mart, no, first one, sorry, Mowers, regarding Mowers Stores, superfan area, application for 050 retail beer off-premises only, and 070 retail wine off-premises only. And at this time, we'll have a public hearing on that, and then we'll debate the Max Mini Mart. Anybody has any comments on that particular business? It should be. They haven't met without alcohol, are you bored? And in compliance with everything that they're supposed to be in compliance with? And is there a recommendation that we approve this?
Are y'all, y'all want a sugar band? Kevin is with the sugar band.
No, I think Mr. Mowers not coming, and I talked to Kevin. Okay, there's no comment on that one, let's go to the second one. Recommendation to approve, not that, second one would be a public hearing regarding Mid-South Petroleum, which is Max Mini Mart, application for old Eleven Lounge Retail Liquor Class II Package License. Is there any comment regarding Max liquor store management? Where's that located? It's uptown, right across from Yon Hall Place on the corner of the street. We have a manager here, if you, you know, if I have any questions for them, now would be the time to do it.
I have questioned the glass building. I have been told that it is compliant, in compliance. Are y'all going to leave it as is, or will it be?
If there's a time, because it is in compliance, and it was, what we were told, you know, where it had to be, what it could be. All right, first question, you guys go ahead.
Well, no, I did have some questions for Sugar Band, but they're not here, so. Who, what?
What kind of question?
I wanted to verify their, that they had notified all these stakeholders as they were supposed to.
They were supposed to, now, I did call, and talk to Kevin, and I think the first time it was set to six o'clock.
Right.
And I called him back, told him it's been to five o'clock, and I think, Scotty, anybody can help me if you know any other, I know that they talked to Scotty and Ronnie about it, to make sure that they didn't let the public know. I don't know if he went back around and gave flowers back around changing the time. That should be certification of the question.
Do you have that?
I have it.
I hate to say anything with them not here, to ask your questions.
Do we have Sherwood and DeWey here next time? Have they contacted you?
I don't know. But I'm not, I mean, you're not that, when you're Roxanne with the other. But there is a question as to whether everyone was contacted.
If it was in, and, um, I'm sure he was here to run, he's got a real important assignment right now. Can't be here, he is the spokesperson for alcohol we need to be. And I don't know if Scott can answer anything else, or see if it would be, if they didn't be on. That should be part of the certification before that. I haven't seen that. I haven't seen one.
Well, there's some questions that I need answered before, so I don't know how to handle that.
Well, let's go, well, let's get, go ahead and have the recommendations to approve the minutes from the last meeting, and then we'll go back to this other minute in a second. So if I get a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting, do I have a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Greg, down to second.
I'll say that.
Okay, Tammy. Any discussion on the minutes of the last meeting? All in favor, say aye. Uh, Greg made a motion, and Tammy, second. Now, let's get down to number three. This would be a recommendation to approve Resolution Number 2013-1-7B. This is for Mid-South Petroleum, located on Bexar Avenue, Suite B. It is a Max Mini Mart business. Do I have a motion to receive this recommendation, to have a motion to approve it? They have been all the requirements set forth, orders for issuance of such license now being resolved by the City of Hampton. I validate that the City of Hampton grants its consent and approval to the issuance of such license subject to the laws, regulations, governing such license. Is there a recommendation for this?
I'm not a recommendation.
Okay, Francis. Down to second. Do I have a second for Max Mini Mart?
I'll say.
Okay, Greg, thank you. Is there any discussion before we vote? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. He said, ask Marla and Shob, she said they did pass out the flowers. They did pass out the flowers.
But there was an alcohol committee meeting Friday at the middle floor, and that's why we called her, and I was able to meet her. I think it was her and, um, each member was there. I think the chief was there, I think Scotty was, Drew Bad, and they were all there, but me.
But this was concerning. Sugar Band. Sugar Band. So the flowers passed out for Sugar.
So we're approved?
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
I spoke with four real property owners today, and others four, only one of them acknowledged that they had received anything. So, that's why I need to question.
If at all.
Sugar Band, the shale station, to find out exactly who they left them with, if they were certified letters, if they presented where they were returned, because, now, one individual didn't say that they had received the letter, and then someone came back and told me of the change of time, but the others had no knowledge until I called them today. So, and I hate that they're not here.
Aaron, that's really, I hate it, I don't know that. Well, we will go down, and we'll come back to that meeting if you all want to. Number four is a recommendation to advertise for local police officer position in the police department due to Steve Nichols retiring. Steve is going to retire, personally, this would just be replacing Steve Nichols, and so we just need a recommendation to approve. We're going to post it for a couple of weeks, and then hire somebody probably later this month, but we need to get that posted. If it's not adding anybody, it's just replacing someone that's retiring, so I need a recommendation to approve this position. Thank you, Greg. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Lynn. Is there any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye. Okay. Number five is a recommendation to purchase two Dodge Chryslers, I mean Dodge Chargers, fifteen thousand each, from the American Chevy Insurance Department. Ronnie did have this in his budget, previous budget, with previous. Chief did have three new tie-holes, but we changed that to, just to get a couple of these used ones. These are two chargers that were being used by American Drug Task Force. They're in good shape. The only reason they're not being used is the Drug Task Force doesn't have many officers they used to have. So they're down several officers. These cars are in excellent condition, they already come equipped, we don't have to pay for any equipment to go in them, and they are at fair market value, which is what you have to sell for. You couldn't sell them for any less. So they're fair market value with equipment. What about mileage? Mileage on one is forty-eight thousand, and one is fifty-five.
He said that was fine, they might, but your battery, tires were good, everything was good, so I guess it's a good deal.
So I do need a motion to approve this purchase, if it's okay. I'll make a motion.
Will you?
Thank you, Lynn.
You're not second.
Okay, Francis, any other discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next is a recommendation to approve a local construction specialty associates incorporated for thirty-eight thousand four hundred and three dollars. This is to repair or replace the roof actually on the water treatment plant. Rodney can tell us more, the roof has been leaking for a long run.
Several years.
Quite a long time. And it needs to be replaced because it's caused damage to other things inside the building. And this is something, you know, we didn't plan on spending thirty-eight thousand dollars, but you don't have a choice because it's not getting any better, and it's getting worse, and it's caused damage to inside the building. There was three estimates, I have them here. The low bid was thirty-eight thousand, this company, specialty associates. The other two estimates were a little bit higher. One was forty-four thousand three hundred and eight dollars. And let's see what the other was. Find it here. Forty-three thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars. Rodney, if you want to speak on that before we vote on it, just tell us your thoughts and the reason for it.
Of course, like you said, we've had a roof that's been leaking for quite some time, and we've had to replace some equipment inside the plant due to the roof leaking, and running down and rusting out some conduit that we had. So it's definitely a must that we get a roof put on here. We entertain the idea of going with a sloped roof instead of a, going back with a flat roof, but engineers told me that the plant is not structurally designed for a pitched roof, plus the cost of putting a pitched roof on would be over double what this price would be. And this roof is a, it's a Duralast roofing system. All three bids actually bid on the same system of going back on. This roof comes with a fifteen-year no-dollar limit warranty on the roofing system itself. Plus, the contractor listed a two-year contractor warranty on the roof itself.
So it's at three different levels?
Yes, there's three different sections of the roof.
And it's not dripping now, it's pouring, isn't it? Down the sides.
And in the middle. Yeah.
Got my voice in there.
Over you.
I've been there when it's raining, so. Yes, sir.
May I have a question on that?
Yes, sir.
You say the contractor said it did be about fifteen-year warranty on that?
The Duralast roofing system has a fifteen-year no-dollar limit warranty on it.
Okay. So in fifteen years, if it leaves, you have to spend that much again.
Well, after the fifteen years.
Have you compared, have you compared the difference between the flat roof being roofed three times in forty-five years than your pitched roof that probably, probably lasts fifty years at one time? Might consider that.
Yeah.
Because in the long run, you're going to be, you're going to be out more money than you, still got the same roof.
Hopefully, this roof will last a lot longer, fifteen years.
Because it's about twenty years.
It's about twenty years on now.
But you can't put a pitched roof, it's not designed for it, is that not what you're saying?
Yeah. Well, the pitched roof, the actual roof on the water plant is concrete, and the extra weight you would have, you put the trusses and a pitched roof on it, it's not structurally designed to do that.
You don't have any petition support.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any more comments before we vote on? Are there any motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Tammy. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay, Lynn. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Next is a recommendation to pay the retired retirement systems by Alabama, nine hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty-five cents employer cost on the air service for Sheila Burnett to purchase six months of service. Sheila started many years ago, and was not paying into the retirement system, was working more than reactionable, hard-time shooter band, so she is buying back some service in our part, is nine hundred and eighty-four dollars, which we should pay. So I need a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Tammy. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay, Francis. Is there any other discussion on this? All in favor, say aye. Thank you. I raise the recommendation to approve Resolution Number 2012-1217, amended Resolution Number 2012-416A. This is changing the fees of charge to resume property request from three hundred to hundred feet. The property's up to the last meeting, and I swore on the stack of bottles that I've been, we voted on it, but we did not vote on it. We did have a motion and a second, a little bit of discussion, we did not vote, so we are going to vote on it tonight, just to prove what we did a couple of weeks ago, but it needs to be corrected, corrected, so that's what we're doing now, is making a recommendation to approve this request.
I'll make that motion again.
Okay, Francis, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Greg. Is there any discussion on it? Okay, all in favor, say aye. All right. I appreciate that. Let's go back to Mowers. Unless you can hear it. And discuss this if you want to, or if you want, if you feel comfortable about it, if you want to wait, we'll wait, but if we're in compliance, then I would say, go ahead and do it, and if there's a question that we might not be, need to look at it again, then two weeks might not matter.
Mr. Tyer, do you have any input in this?
Uh, no, I, I don't, no. Then the letters that were sent out, if they were notified or not, I don't know.
Went up to that point, for as you know, they are in compliance.
Yes, yes.
Scotty, any thoughts? Recommendations, or force your suggestion?
All I have is, what I already said, is that they are in compliance, and again, the flowers out, I don't know. There is some disrepute, some, I don't know.
Scott, what percentage do they have to give out to in, to be in compliance?
Five hundred feet.
Well, no doubt, but I mean, is there a percentage? Do they have to have a hall, or a car, or what?
That's not a percentage. Everyone was.
How do they know, I mean, in the process of this, how do you know if they passed them out or not to get it to this point? It should have been checked somehow or another.
Have they turned back in, or whatever?
No. I'm not sure.
You know, we mentioned it before, that all real property owners had to be notified by certified mail, correct? At least a week prior to the hearing. And then, like homes, if the owner of the property lives in the house, then a flyer can be handed to anyone over eighteen. But if it's rental property, the flyer has to go to the real property owner, correct?
That's true.
Okay.
Because you're the resident, the person who brought it.
But to the real property owner also, so.
That's what should be discussed at the meeting Friday. I agree. The basis for any things. The day, having any discussion, we're going to make the recommendation to approve. And I'll have a assistant to talk to Marla there, but she said that they did something for her.
So they may have sent out certified mail, may have been returned.
See, and coming obviously, if somebody gets them out and accepts a certified mail.
Is there any more to be in opposition to, without the way that everybody knows all, is there being discussion?
The persons that I talked to today didn't know anything about it.
We didn't get, we didn't, they did.
And I didn't misspeak. One of the people that I spoke to today knew about it, the others did not.
The notice in the newspaper was for, was early, it counted, six, the sixth one.
Correct.
So, this was a redo, in other words, we don't know if the redo was.
Correct.
But they didn't have notice at the first minute?
Well, they didn't have notice at the first minute.
Well, I tell you what, I would go by the recommendation of a police review committee. We don't have to vote, if you know it's enough, if you don't want to vote tonight, we'll do it the next one. You know, I asked for a recommendation, we don't get a first and second vote, then we'll just put it off the next week. It's not that big of a deal. So, I'll make that a recommendation, or ask for a recommendation, and then if, you know, the council says, well, we don't, we'll wait till two weeks, then we'll just wait two weeks, we'll meet again on the twenty-second, and we'll make sure that they're notified properly. But going by the police review committee after they met Friday, I would come up with what they said. So I'm asking for a motion to approve. If we don't get a first and second, then we'll do it the next week. This is pretty simple.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Greg.
I'll second it.
Is there any other discussion?
Well, the thing is that this has been ongoing for how long?
Several weeks.
Oh. There's a, there's a paper out there, you know, and the meetings are scheduled, and I just don't see any reason dragging it out. But Tammy, Scott, you know, the folks there, that these people didn't know it, well, why did they not know it? I mean, I don't want to jump ahead of ourselves, but this has been ongoing for, ever since what Mr. Mowers, Kevin, was in here that day, and all this commenced and started, and you've got all these committees and boards, and everything's been approved, so that's, that's my reason, I feel like that it's been done, and in compliance with everything's been required of them, so, you know, I might be wrong, but when I come back and, I want to know how we can, how we can prove it, are we lacking on that part? Maybe looks like we should bring that back to the board, or they should have enough evidence there that, that supports it. So, I'll give a second.
Okay, is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
I have a question. Yeah, you stand there.
Yes, ma'am. All right. If we make the motion to adjourn, I would ask if anybody's got anything to say while you're here, before we.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I believe you published it in a paper, but my memory has skipped me a little bit.
Okay.
When you zone for alcohol permits, what was the legal distance from church and school?
Two hundred feet from the outside wall.
Outside wall or property.
Well, it's a wall, it's not the property line, it's, it's a wall of the building.
Why not the property line?
That's just where the order is, is really.
Brought down the state like that, no, you can't, it's not Scott.
And that's what we've seen in most others, and because of the differences in property that you ran into with churches and businesses, that we felt like it was better to do it from a defined point of the building, as opposed to property, because sometimes somebody may own several acres, and they've got a pretty huge buffer, but if you go with the property line, it could be next doors. Sorry, we're not on.
Do you stand? Can you say that again?
We, we looked at using other municipalities and seeing what we had done before, two years ago when we drafted, you know, draft ordinance, we felt like it was better to go from the defined point of the licensed premises and a church or a school as opposed to property line, because you ran into a situation where somebody may own several acres, and if you start going into property, that could wipe out a considerable amount of the city limits.
Kevin?
Well, that doesn't answer my question.
Okay. I'm sorry, what, I mean, what else? Is there any other specific question? I mean, without the property, is there like a certain instance or...
What bothers me is that you go from building to building instead of property line to property line. And property line could be from here to you.
Right.
From the, from the business that's selling alcohol.
Yes, sir.
And, and you'd be the school.
Right. But also separation of major highways has a lot to do with it too, Scott. And you could be across the street and how sell alcohol, and across the street you'd have a school or a church, but because of that state highway, that's the reason that, you know, it could be within that footage and still be... Or you have the four-lane highway.
We basically have a natural buffer with our school, with the middle school and high school, it's surrounded on two sides by state highways, and the other side we have basically the first Baptist church, whereas the elementary school is buffered to some extent by public property as well, so we really don't run into that issue with our school.
In terms of use of the state property as a buffer? Okay.
That's, that might be why you're in a, is that help?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is anybody else anything? This coming Friday, grand open of the Dollar Tree will be open at eight o'clock, but the grand open is at seven fifty-five, so there'll be a ribbon cutting, anybody that's watching or wants to come by, welcome to Hamilton, reticle that you're here, and hope you have a lot of success, and they got a real, real nice store, be open this coming Friday, January the eleventh, but they will have a ribbon cutting at seven fifty-five AM, so anybody that wants to come is welcome to come. Also, tomorrow night, Rocky writings, their new pro-aid judge will be sworn in at First National Bank, he'll be there from six till about eight, so if you're welcome to come to First National Bank, it won't have been announced, but he's swearing in tomorrow night. Also, Rodney, would you touch on, basically, still have a few calls about water that's smelling, and it's on different sides of town, and fortunately, where I live, I ain't smelling, so I don't know what you're talking about, but there's a lot of people that does, and would you touch base and tell them that this is just a matter of time, unfortunately?
We have, we did get several complaints last week, and the consultant that actually installed the system at the plant, and I went out on Friday and checked every call that came in, so...
Was it houses or buildings?
We met the houses, and every call that came in, we took his name and address, and he and I went out and checked each place, pretty much getting same results everywhere we go, it's, it's, we're still tweaking on it at the water plant, trying to get it down to right exactly where we want it. We can't just go in and turn it off, because we have to have, maintain it out in the system. But we are still tweaking on it, and it is going to get better. I know people are getting tired of you and that, but it does take time to get it out in the system, we can't just turn it down to the plant and everything will be fine. It has to work through the system, and that does take time.
Within a few weeks?
Weeks.
In the winter time, you said, it's probably...
The winter time, it's...
We never chose the winter to do it, but the winter time probably is harder because of using as much hot water.
Right. And the, the complaint we're getting, people from their hot water, basically what happens is the chlorine dioxide that's in the, out in the system, when it hits the, when the hot water hits, the hot water, vapor off the hot water lets it release the gases off the chlorine dioxide, and that's where the smell's coming from. It's not harmful, it's actually cleaner than it was before. But we are tweaking it to get that smell out, and that's basically what we're, why we're tweaking it, to get rid of this smell.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I've spoken with Rodney, and he left me a message at my house, he did check mine, but I wondered, could you tell me what pouring residual is supposed to be as opposed to what mine was?
Yours was a...
It was one point two five.
One point two five. We're trying to get that down to where you will have like a point eight to a one point zero, and that should eliminate the smell. That's what we're doing throughout the system, trying to get it down, we have to maintain a certain level according to ADM and EPA, but we're trying to get it down to, we're, we're required to maintain like a point five out in the system, and we're trying to get it to right at a one point oh.
And there's no some harmful side effects from this that you know of?
Not at all.
Okay.
It's actually cleaner than it was before.
Thank you.
Well, I have a question, please. What about the dirty water? By the time y'all get all this straightened out, I'm, I'm a cleaning nut, and by the time y'all get all this straightened out, I will end up buying a new commode for my bathroom that is used the most. I cannot today even get it cleaned, y'all are hearing my little housekeeper, every time she comes, she screams.
Call our office, and we will definitely check it out for you.
Thank you, well, I figured you had enough.
Is the whole area...
Another one from this old lady.
Is your whole area, I think, houses right beside you and...
I, I haven't questioned them, I don't...
You don't know?
We're friendly neighbors, but we just don't get into anybody's business. That's the way I like...
Well, you don't know if their water's dirty or not? Okay.
I know one is, but I, I bet they can take care of that.
Call us, and we'll take care of it.
Okay.
I have something to say.
Yes, sir.
You know the street out there, Bob? All of it's due, should, because I've called a million times and been down on the board at least fifty times, and that water line going down our street has been replaced since it was put in there. I bought that property in fifty-eight, and they had, had this same water line through there before I bought that property, and it's still there. I was gonna keep a schedule on calendar one time, and if, I'd have to make an entry two or three times a week, so I just quit keeping up with it, and I was gonna bring the calendar or any of them and show you how many times they come out there and worked on the land for a leak. But every time there's a leak, I have to flush my system, 'cause it's muddy, and like she says, if you don't flush your system, it'll ruin the guts of your stuff, because I've had to replace mine a time or two, because it didn't get to it soon enough. But the system's not flushed when it's worked on, and that's why I'm getting that. The next thing I'm getting at, the water line is too small and it's too old, it's breakly, every time I work on it, it won't be, it won't be three days or a week that it'll leak again. Now, they started, they started putting in copper tubing from the main to the meter, which they thought that would help things, but it don't. It'll just, it'll just last longer, but we had a leak when they did that.
There was a leak in the middle of the street.
Well, another, last year, I had purchased a new refrigerator, and you're aware of it, because I called your office, they had the, the street that I live on blocked on both ends, you could not get in either way, and coincidentally, my refrigerator came in. The guy couldn't bring it, so he goes down to the old Walmart parking lot, and I hire my son-in-law, and someone said about me hiring my son-in-law, he got back to me, but who you gonna get in Hamilton? So, anyway, he goes and he, he has to unload that refrigerator, uncrad it, bring it to my house, go in and take my old one out, he has to dispose of it. That's not failing me, I paid a hundred and fifty dollars. Now, it's not right, but we could not get in either end of the street.
That was when the contractors were down there doing the water, the sewer line.
Well, it doesn't matter who was doing it.
That's right.
It was still done. But I'm over it now, I've lived without that hundred and fifty dollars.
They were supposed to leave one side of the street open at all times.
Nope. I lived there, I know, 'cause I checked both ends, but he was coming in with the refrigerator. But that's past tense.
The only complaint that I've got is they don't flush the, they don't flush the line when they work on it, because I do have mud, I do have muddy water, and if I don't flush my system till it runs clean, I wind up replacing my valves on the inside of my commode, seats, stuff like that, seats in your shut-off valves.
That's an area we need to look at, and I think possible, we might be able to get some grants too. We can look at that, Rodney and I will look at that, give it to the county, see if there's something, you know, might have that area. I know, I know you've lived over there for years and had those problems, way back in my zone council, years ago.
Well, you know, as a courtesy, it would be nice if we knew when the street was gonna be closed. I'd have had it happen, Murkison, and then try to...
I still think, we'll try to pay more attention to that.
You said it had been since nineteen fifty-eight, those lines were in there? No, no view was...
That line was put in before nineteen fifty-eight, that's when I bought the property.
And what street now do you live on?
I live on, I live on Ashwood Avenue.
Ashwood, close to the Hoston, Jack Horn, over that.
Every one of them's been on the city council and never opened their mouth about it. And I don't think they're too good of neighbors to not stand up for their own property benefit and be on city council where they can get something done. I've got two neighbors that's been on city council, he's been on there twice, and he's had the opportunity twice to get something done through there, and he didn't do it. That's why I kept my mouth shut. There's nobody up through there now, it's on the city council. But I've learned to flush my system, when I see a truck go up the road, I tell Dolly, I say, "Cut your water off, they fixed to work on the land." She'll say, "Again?" Well, it's always right up on the hill.
More than one area like that, I know. We're very confident we'll do everything we can.
A new land...
May take a while.
New land would eliminate that.
Okay.
And a four-inch line at that, now, no two. And it put us in some fire hydrants too. I measured my house to the nearest fire hydrant, and it was four hundred and ninety-nine feet. I asked the fire truck, I says, "How many feet of hose have you got for your truck?" He said, "Five hundred." I said, "It won't reach then from the fire hydrant to your truck sitting out in front of my house in the street." "Oh, we got other hoses." He said, "We use a pump on the, on the fire truck." But that dog, that doesn't make sense to me, when I can drive out in the country, it's still in the city limits, I can drive out in the country, and it's, it's closer than any thousand feet.
Anybody else can? Any council anything? All right. Have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Greg, have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Leon. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.